You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the May 17th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by looking at www dot access laporte county dot org.
Today is May 17th, and I would like to call the Common Council regular meeting to order is 6:31. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance and a word of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nyla on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
He'll be here shortly.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
Right, and I know, I'll note when Mr. Privilinski gets here, we'll add him to the, uh, the roll call. Um, I would like to ask for approval of our hybrid Zoom meeting from May 4th, 2022, our council meeting, our May 4th, 2022 executive session minutes and our approval of our special council meeting on May 4th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski and a second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Ms. Nyla on the roll call.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Mack.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Are there any reports of any standing committees? Reports of any standing committees? No reports of standing committees. Um, Finance Committee, um, report from Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, the City Finance Committee meeting met and there was the approval of the minutes. We also, um, approved claims and funds number 2042 Riverboat for $20,020. And that was for, um, Sherwin Williams for equipment. And that was approved with and passed with two votes in one day. We off, um, and just, um, we also just discussed, um, the current resolutions that will be read tonight and ordinances on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. You said $20,020?
Sorry.
I don't have that correction. Okay, I see it. All right, we'll move on to the claims docket. Uh, for the claims docket, we have fine 2042 Riverboat claims that was just, um, told by us by Finance Chair Councilwoman Tracy Tillman with a vote of two to one. Um, so I open it up for a motion for approval.
Madam Chair, do we need to amend this amount?
Yes, uh, well, let me say this. Um, since it's a, it's a grammatical, we could do our authors, it doesn't have to be a motion or anything since it's 20 cents.
Right.
So it's just a, a grammatical, yeah, um, issue. So, uh, just note that for the record, um, clerk Nyla, that is $20,020. But as received in your claims docket, um, filed on May 10th, it has to correct them out. All right, so I'll, uh, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski, a second by Councilwoman Tillman, Ms. Nyla on the vote. And note that Councilman Paul Privilinski is here.
Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
That is the claims docket.
Oh. Nay.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Uh, Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. Are there any reports of special or select committees? Or some special or select committees? Right, any reports from the mayor or any other city officers or departments? Any additional reports from mayor or other city departments? All right, Ms. Nyla, any petitions?
A petition was received in a clerk's office on May 10th from James Stewart, Michigan City, supporting Michigan City getting a field house.
I, I will allow, um, Ms. Lucy Segovia to come up. Uh, Mr. James Stewart, um, oh, you just received a copy of, um, a document, um, from Mr. James Stewart that was sent. And, um, it's just, uh, a point of privilege, I'm allow her to say a couple of words, but, uh, everything that, um, he wanted to, to read out loud is pretty long. So we're not going to allow that this evening, but everybody has a copy. And I did talk to Mr. Stewart, um, two weeks ago, um, in reference to this.
Hi, good evening.
And state, state your address as well and your name.
Good evening, my name is Lucy Segovia, I live at 508 Box Point Drive, Michigan City, Indiana, 46360. Um, I'm, I'm here on behalf of Jimmy Stewart. Um, I call him Coach Stewart. Um, my, I have been born and raised in the city, my kids are born and raised in the city so far. They've played many academic sports throughout their, uh, from the age of five and up. Currently they're in football, they'll be freshmen this year. My oldest, actually both my sons are, um, aspirations to go to professional football. So I feel like the community should really look into the field house and give the approval because, um, all I hear on social media is how the youth are on the streets, they're not doing anything good, and I feel like the community needs to really focus in on the future of America and inside and within this community and, you know, start focusing on the youth and what we can do to give them positive outlets in the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, I know Mr. Stewart has talked to Councilman Mack and others, uh, in reference to this. And, um, and I did share with them that, you know, first steps would be of some type of feasibility study, but, um, again, I think everybody's in agreement, we need something for the youth to do, so thank you. And they, they turned in 500, but they got almost 1,000, so there's more, more signatures coming. I, I did tell him I would share that, so thank you.
Ms. Nyla.
Communications.
Correspondence was received in clerk's office on April 28th from Mr. McCormick regarding a motion of contempt for violation of IC 36-7-18-52. Correspondence was received in the clerk's office from emergency management volunteer equipment proposal that the council requested at the last council meeting on May 4th. Correspondence was also received in a clerk's office from Harris Law Firm regarding the appointment of Attorney Gerald M. Bishop as a council hearing officer. And correspondence was received from Harris Law Firm regarding the alternate appointment to Attorney Patrick Lipp as a council hearing officer. Um, correspondence was received by George Dobie, uh, regarding the actions that were taken by Mayor Perry to the Michigan City Housing Authority. Members.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Um, first resolution by title only by, um, the clerk, and then I'm going to allow, um, Councilman Don Privilinski to read it in its entirety.
A resolution by title only approving the amendment to the 2022-2024 Union Contract between the Michigan City Fraternal Order of Police, Dunes Lodge 75, the Michigan City, Indiana, regarding Article 10 Supplemental Benefits Section Lateral Transfers Subsections 2. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Preselinski and Mr. Dabney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk, and what I'm going to do is read the, uh, resolution and there's the Amendment A and, or Exhibit A, and I want to, uh, cover that too. Just to give some background, and I know all council members got a copy of it, but whether you read it or not, I don't know, but just to give you some background to where we're at today with this, uh, resolution. So moving on, uh, the whereas the need exists to amend the contract for 2022-2024 between the City of Michigan City, Indiana, the FOP Lodge 75 here and after referred to as a contract. Whereas the amendment to the said contract, which is attached here to and incorporated here herein as Exhibit A, sets forth a factual basis as to why the need exists to amend Article 10 parentheses I parentheses 2 of the contract. And whereas the common council being duly advised in the premises now desires to amend the contract. Now therefore be resolved by this common council, the City of Michigan City, the Board Indiana, the Board County of Indiana follows. The aforementioned whereas paragraphs are hereby incorporated as all fully set forth in these resolving clauses. The common council hereby approves the amendment to con, to 2022-2024 Union Contract between the Michigan City FOP Lodge 75 and the City of Michigan City, Indiana, regarding Article 10 Supplemental Benefits, Section 1, Lateral Transfers and Subsection 2, which is attached here to as Exhibit A. Uh, and number three, the president of the common council is hereby authorized to execute Exhibit A, which is on the next page. Uh, the amendment, uh, I won't read the, uh, the title, but I will read, uh, the next paragraph. This amendment to the contract for 2022-2024 between the City of Michigan City, Indiana. And the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 75 is entered into by and between the City of Michigan City, by and through the Michigan City City Council, Michigan City Board of Public Works and Safety, and the mayor and hereafter referred to as city, and the Fraternal Order of Police Dunes Lodge 75 to memorizing an amendment to the 2022-2024 contract, specifically Article 10 Supplemental Benefits, Section 1, Lateral Transfer, which is in subsection 2. Whereas on or about March 3rd, 2022, the city and the FOP met to finalize negotiations for the contract 2022-2022 and 2024 between the City of Michigan City, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 75. And at that time, the parties agreed that Article 10 Paragraph 1, Section 2 would read as follows. Officers that have less than one year of full-time experience or any amount of part-time experience will be hired at the one-year experience level. And shortly thereafter, at the beginning of the March 2022, the FOP negotiating team advised that they took the proposed new contract for a vote to the FOP and FOP voted in favor of the, uh, contract. And whereas following the FOP vote on March 22, 2022, Sergeant Henderson, who was the lead member of the FOP negotiating team, reached via email to the city's corporate council advising of the following. After review and talking with the other members of the committee, the only thing that seems odd to us is one, uh, or I, lateral transfer, C, with the way the pay scale is structured, if lateral transfer is less than one year of service, they would be hired as a prob, uh, probationary officer. They should not be able to make more than a Michigan City PD hire that has as much time, if not more, while still being under one full year. That was an error on our end, as well as completely overlooked. That line does not make sense to you. Does this make sense to you? And whereas based on the aforementioned email, Corporation Council then recirculated a draft of the proposed FOP contract to Sergeant Henderson and the Council's Labor Relations Committee on March 23rd and 24th, 2022, with Article X, subsection I, uh, paragraph two is follows. Officers that have less than one year of full-time experience or any amount of part-time experience will be hired as a probationary officer. Now, whereas on March 24th, 2022, Sergeant Henderson advised that the draft of the contract was fine and was subsequently signed by the FOP and was approved by the common council on April 5th, the Board of Works on April 18th, whereas on or about April 19th, Sergeant Henderson emailed the members of the Labor Relations Committee requesting a meeting due to an error on his behalf regarding Article 10, uh, Paragraph I, subsection 2 of the contract. And whereas on April 25th, the LRC met with negotiating the members of the FOP, at which time Sergeant Henderson explained that he did not have the authority on behalf of the entire FOP to suggest the language change to the corporate council. On March 22, 2022, to Article 10, uh, subsection I, subsection 2 of the contract, and as such requested the contract language that was voted on by the FOP, which states officers that have less than one year of full-time experience or any amount of part-time experience will be hired at one-year experience level, be amended back into the 2020-24, 2022-2024 contract. So whereas on April 25th, 2022, the Laporte, or the, uh, Labor Relations Committee agreed that Article 10 subsection I, subsection 2 of the contract should read as follows. Officers that have less than one year of full-time experience or any amount of part-time experience will be hired at one-year experience. And whereas parties now desire to formally amend Article 10 subsection I, subsection 2 of the contract to read as follows, officers that have less than one year of full-time experience or an amount of part-time experience will be hired at the one-year experience level. Now therefore, in exchange of the mutual promises made and other valuable considerations, the parties agreed as follows, incorporation of whereas sections. The aforementioned whereas sections are incorporated herein as a fully set forth herein in Article 10 subsection I, subsection 2. Article 10 subsection I, subsection 2, which currently reads, officers that have less than one year of full-time experience or any amount of part-time experience will be hired as a probation officer now shall be amended to read, officers with less than one year of full-time experience and any amount of part-time experience will be hired at a one-year experience level. Although the terms and conditions of the contract not in conflict herein shall remain in full force and effect. So that is what was agreed upon between, uh, the LRC Committee and the FOP. And this is what the council is, could be voting on tonight on this resolution to accept the, uh, the change to where, uh, as I stated, officers that have less than one year of full-time experience or any amount of part-time experience will be hired at the one-year experience level.
Right, thank you. Any, any additional comments from the sponsors? That's pretty thorough, right? Um, any comments from, from the, um, from the, um, public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council, Councilman Paul?
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I'm asking that, uh, this be tabled, I'm making a motion that this be tabled so that we can have an executive session on this. And, uh, I have a problem with some of this language, I had a problem with it at the time. And, uh, I don't want to formally make, uh, put my position out there um, at this time, since it has to deal with contractual language. And, uh, my, uh, problem is with this, uh, paragraph and also the lateral transfer program. So I'm, I'm making a motion to table this for one meeting.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Can I have a question?
There's a motion on the table.
It's in regards to the motion. Cause I know we have, um, it'll be three weeks until our next meeting. Is there anything pertinent that this would affect by tabling?
Yes, I, I believe that I have a problem with the language, um, on the hiring process and how it's going to affect people that get hired. And I don't, I don't want to state that position now publicly at this time. So we could have table it or the, uh, till the next meeting or the, uh, chair could call for an executive session with a special meeting after that. But I, I, I do have a serious problem with this because I think it'll affect probationary officers. I had a problem with the lateral transfer program, the way it was stated, because my whole concerns were about giving people super seniority. And I think that the way this is stated, it could be a grievance could be filed and, um, have the merit board, the, see, once it leaves us, the merit board will interpret this language how they see fit.
We have a motion on the table, is there a second? That being said, there, it, there, it's all not, uh, the table link doesn't move forward. All right, any additional comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, Councilman, uh, Brian Dabney.
To table this and, and move it back, uh, a part of this passing it tonight, actually the calculation of the salaries in this contract are to be backdated, um, to the beginning of the year. And if we move again, new calculations would have to be made, uh, by the Controller's Office, another Controller's Office is not in today, they're at a conference. But if we table once again, and then if it's not passed, they cannot go back and do the backdating of the salaries on something that is not passed, which means they'd have to go through that whole process again of, uh, changing salaries.
Any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul.
Okay, since we don't want to table it, we'll talk about the contractual appliances right now. The way this is stated, and this is my interpretation from my schooling and my years of experience as a union rep. If you read the paragraph that says, uh, uh, now therefore subsection 2, uh, sentence number 2, that officers that have less than one year of full-time experience or any amount of part-time experience will be hired at the one-year experience level. So what that does, if you have a probationary officer, that gives that person, even if he's a part-time, worked as a part-time employee, I don't care, security, uh, at however they interpret this, because that's not spelled out on what the part-time structure is, is that they'll be given super seniority over a probie. So do you think that somebody that, and we have, I believe, six probies right now, they will have super seniority over those probies? So what that will do in the future, that will also affect their rank in any promotions also. And so then, once it leaves us, it'll go in the merit board, will interpret it. But I, I think that this should be more spelled out, and that's why my name is not on this. I have strong reservations about this particular resolution in amending what's there, because I think it should be spelled out thoroughly. Because with the lateral transfer program, now, let's put it all out there. So now you're given a prob, you're given a part-timer super seniority. So now if there's a lateral transfer to the department, they have merit to file a complaint with the merit board to grandfather all their time from another department for rank and all other purposes within the department. And that's not the way it's supposed to be, all right? So this is why I'm extremely concerned about it, because it'll affect people that are on our department right now. And this lateral transfer program was sold with trying to recruit people, but we're not trying to recruit people to put the screws to people that are working on our department right now. So I know that there's another paragraph, but this needs to be finite, it needs to be spelled out, the intent, so it doesn't go to the merit and they make the decision that grandfather somebody in, and that's what can happen. They don't come here, they don't go to the Board of Works, they go to the merit commission, all right? And then, and then they can interpret our intent. And my intent is that we don't give somebody super seniority. The guys who are here, we protect. If we got, we have six probies there right now. So are we gonna tick those guys off? And we have two, three or four more guys come in here and hit, and their grandfather didn't want a year seniority over them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Don Privilinski.
I made a motion to approve, support.
All right, we have a, a motion by Councilman Don Privilinski and a second by Councilman Brian Dabney, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preselinski.
Nay.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Nay.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Nay.
And Mr. Don Preselinski.
Aye.
We have, um, six in favor and three opposed.
All right, Ms. Nyla, so, uh, that resolution passes, Ms. Nyla, the second resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only authorizing petty cash and cash change funds to add the special event director to the list of authorized custodians. Uh, and this is introduced by Mr. Simmons, Mr. Mack, and Ms. Jagus.
Any comments from sponsors?
Yes, it's pretty straightforward, this resolution is adding, uh, the special events director to the list of authorized users of petty cash and cash change.
Any additional comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wanted to ask the, uh, Special Events Coordinator, what, um, purchases or what, what need, whether you have for petty cash on a, a daily basis or what unforeseen purchases that may come up?
Good evening, Terry Greatham, Director of Special Events. The main purpose of this, the Singing Sands Sand Sculpting Festival, uh, tickets are purchased at the gate for this event, and this allows us to have a change bank. So people come with cash, we will have the ability to take credit cards or debit cards, but if people come with cash, we have to have a change bank.
Okay, I understand the change bank, okay, but it says petty cash also, so or are they one in the same?
The one in the same.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Post to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jacobs.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Hi.
And Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Ms. Nyla, a third resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, approving the issuance of special revenue bonds by the city of Michigan City, Indiana sanitary district relating to the extension of sewage work services to a portion of the town of Long Beach, Indiana, and all matters related thereto. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Jacobs, and Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Do any of the sponsors have um any comments?
Uh Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I wanna make the motion to table this resolution at this time. Uh we we also have a ordinance that's could be on first reading tonight. It's gonna talk about the uh rates uh setting, so that has to come first before we talk about bonding. And I know that there is probably gonna be a lot of questions about it, so.
We have a motion, we need a second. And we have a second by Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Snail upon the vote.
Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
And Ms. Jacobs.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed to table it. Is this to table till the next meeting?
So after the ordinance is approved or?
Mr. Myers. Addresses.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. My name is James Meyer for the record. I'm the general counsel for the Michigan City Sanitary District. The uh it the tabling is a good idea. Um we just had things introduced so that the council would know what would be coming down the road in reference to the resolution. But in order to approve the bond resolution, the the rates needed to be paid by the Long Beach customers to have the money to pay the bond, make the bond payments should be approved first. Um so I would agree, I mean, it just happens the way the council, as you guys all know, but uh excuse me, uh agenda is laid out, you always have your resolutions first. It's just in this particular case, the resolution, you know, shouldn't be wait, you should wait to move and approve the resolution until you have approved the ordinance establishing the rates that the Long Beach customers have to pay in order to fund the bond issue.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Nyla, just um I would just for the for the record, it'll be tabled until um three meetings from now. Okay?
Well, just to be clear, I think there's going to be a request, Mr. Vladovich can speak to it, but to ask that the ordinance be approved on two readings instead of three.
Well, you can make it for two, two meetings from now. That'll work. All right, thank you.
Never, I have a quick question for Mr. Meyer.
Yes, Mr. Dabney.
Yeah, uh was the discussion ever on the table of annexing these properties into Michigan City?
Well, can we do that on the ordinance?
Um I can.
Let's do that on the ordinance when we bring the ordinance out, since we just tabled that.
That's fine.
Can we do that on the ordinance when we bring that back up? Cause we got a lot of questions for that one. So let's do it on the ordinance.
Okay.
So we can move through all the rest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Nyla, uh first ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending section two dash one one six A in the Michigan City Municipal Code, commonly known as the use and control of the city credit cards to add the special event directors to the list of authorized users. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons, Mr. Mack, and Ms. Jacobs.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors?
As she just read, it's adding the special event director to the list of authorized users of the city credit card uh following restrictions and controls that are in place, which is five.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the sponsors? Right, comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? All right, with that being said, any comments from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Tracy Toman.
Thank you, Madam President. Um we have this, um we discussed this in our finance committee meeting um this evening. And um Controller Hoffmaster was able to clarify some of the information. But one of the concerns or questions was in regards to um the need for the special events director to have in possession a um corporate credit card, not that it's due to of thinking of being misused or anything, but is there gonna be any other departments um that may need something on a daily base or how frequent and then they'll wanna come in and amend this again? Um we do understand that the limit of the corporate credit card is three thousand dollars. So out of that, um we have the mayor has access to a credit card, the police chief, the fire chief, the personnel director, controller, assistant controller, central maintenance supervisor, park department. And so my question is, will they still need to add this event director as an authorize- authorize to use the credit card? Or could he um utilize one of the many that we currently already have? If we already have at least three, I look at the mayor as also being part of the controller. So if they need to utilize that card, he could use the assistant controller. And is this a purchase to where, if it's a need, that it can be presented when they're in front of the Board of Works? And they cut the check.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Uh Councilman Paul Pribulinski.
Um I uh have some concerns about the money amounts in the reporting process of the use of these cards. Um now, I have a real problem with the uh Park Department Assistant Superintendent having access to seven thousand dollars worth of credit. And I understand that I the explanation that was given, that they need to make change. Well, let me say this, if you're going, if you need that much change and you have banks, we have multiple banks that we have money invested with, that they could put an order in and the it would be delivered, and then they could keep it wherever they keep it secured, so they don't have to worry about going to the bank. So I have a problem with that explanation on using that that amount of that amount of money uh to make change, and it was said to make change on a Saturday. So I mean, to me, it doesn't make really too much sense. So I think that I just think we need to look at this closer uh from the reporting standpoint and the amount of money that's there and what they're how they're uh handling the money down there at the Park Department and making sure that it's secured. Because they, that's all I'll say about that at this time. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman um Brian Dabney.
Yeah, real quick, and the the reason that the dollar amount is so high for the Park Department is cars going in and out all day, we can have a couple busy days down there, and if if somebody's just paying you with all dollars and you run out of change, um you could be stuck in a in a bind and have cars lined up uh all over down to the bridge if you get make change, so this allows uh Shannon to be able to do just that on on demand to be able to go and make change. Um is this a necessity? Um I've seen these operations and how it works down there with the park. I mean, it it'd be nice if everybody was swiping a card or something like that at the gate. Uh but they do need this in order to make, be able to make change in order to keep the line moving at times. It does get that busy down there. Um so hopefully, you know, we could see to it to be able to we get past this and 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 vote yes to this eventually.
Thank you. Um Councilwoman Dalia Jacobs.
Uh yes, and I think there has to be a clarification because petty cash is used for the change. But seven thousand is not the credit card limit for that. So I don't know, I think that's you confusing two things. And I think what we're doing is we're trying to give access to the events director to both petty cash and a credit card, because if you're running an event, you know, you need, like, things come up and you have to take care of them. And I think uh it's just to facilitate the job, a really big job that somebody is doing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Paul Pribulinski.
So uh what you're to, what you're explaining here this evening, that you're telling me that uh Shannon works every Saturday when uh the park is open and the busiest. She's working every Saturday to get uh money out there. And uh well, I was explaining that they need it so they can, they don't run out of uh change on a Saturday because they're constantly running to the banks trying to get change, and it's hard to get change. Well, every bank that I know of is usually closed at noon on Saturday. So see, the explanations, I think there needs to be more control. My point is, I think there needs to be more control and study on this uh Washington Park parking money. That's what I'm getting at here, and and I think that this this should be a totally separate issue on how this money is handled and who's handling it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Councilman Mack.
Uh just to piggyback off what uh Ms. Jacobs said, um it it's real uh common in every uh every everywhere that has a position of uh where there's lots of money handled and there's lots of uh responsibility. And uh, you know, small managers in Michigan City retail managers have corporate credit cards uh three, four hundred dollars to uh do simple things. So for us as a city of our size to not uh A um have the confidence in procedure where one of our top people can have a minimal corporate credit card as if as as many others do. And B uh where we aren't using the uh common practices of petty cash that uh any place that circulates a lot of money, they will have to do that because banks decades ago, banks didn't appreciate uh consistently um you know, doing the the change things, and I think it'll be a little little more difficult to do now. And um you know, we've got so much money running through that place, anything that could streamline the process and make it uh more accurate and easy, we should, we should be all for it.
Uh any additional comments, Councilman Don Fribulinski?
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh just one comment, and when when the ordinance first came down and Controller Hoffmaster sent down the procedures and the SOPs on how they track, how they cross-reference, how bills have to be paid, be brought in. I, you know, all the internal controls are there. And since I've been on this council in ten years, I've never heard of anybody taking money or misusing their credit cards, and correct me if I'm wrong for anybody that's been here that long with me, that I don't see any problems with it whatsoever, and I don't see any problems giving uh the events coordinator a credit card. Now, with it, with the amount of money that the Park Department deals with, the seven thousand dollars, uh that there, I think, should be another issue. And maybe the finance committee can sit down with the Park Department and see why they need all that money and take a look at it in that realm, instead of bringing it out, you know, discussing it here. This has nothing to do with the credit cards. That's a whole separate issue in my mind. But yeah, I I I'm in favor of giving uh the events coordinator a credit card in order for him to uh operate. And I know the internal controls are there. And if something happens, I'm sure the uh city controller will not let us know right away. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be held over for a second.
You asked.
Yes, uh Councilwoman uh Tracy Toman.
Thank you. Um I just wanted to um finish off with just saying that I'm not opposed to approving this. But being the finance chair, considering that this is an amendment, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence if I didn't ask these questions. And I did ask the controller these questions. Some were vague, she could not answer because she's in training, she didn't have her paperwork with her. So I under, I understand that, so I'm not against it, but I just wanna make sure that we all have the transparency as to why now that is being asked to be amended. This is not the first time that the city had an event coordinator, and this was not practiced in the past under past event coordinator. So that's why I was posing these questions. Um and yes, these are two separate things, and from the petty cash, um and that's what's on hand with the credit card. Those are two separate ordinances that we're discussing. I was generally speaking about the credit card.
Thank you. This will be held over for second reading. Uh Ms. Nyla, the second ordinance on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, approving the establishment of a separate schedule of rates and charges by the city of Michigan City, Indiana Sanitary District for owners of property and users located in a portion of the town of Long Beach, Indiana, previously incorporated in the city of Michigan City, Indiana Sanitary District. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Jacobs, and Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Do we have any comments from the sponsors?
Uh one comment, and Mr. Myers is here this evening to answer any questions and also to give a brief explanation. And so is uh Sanitary Superintendent Mike Vladovic. He's here also this evening uh to discuss this project. I went to a sanitary board meeting because I am the liaison for the sanitary district. And I got a little bit of insight, but there's more insight to this, and I'm sure there's questions from the council members, just like there's still questions from me, but I told them that I would sponsor it and bring it forward in front of the council. So, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Um well, what we'll do is now that we'll have public comments, so I'll have Mr. Myers come on up. And that way we can start asking any questions, and then if anybody from the public has anything, um they'll be allowed to speak at this time as well.
Right, again, the record, James Meyer, General Counsel for the Sanitary District. This project has been kicked around now for several years. Uh at various times, there was question about whether it would include the total town of Long Beach or just a portion of Long Beach. That determination was left to the town because it's the towns in the town's boundaries. In response to Mr. Dabney's question earlier about incorporating the part of the town into the city that can only be done if the town asks for it. And of course, they have not. Uh now, it it mentions in here, in the title and in the actual ordinance, that the area that is going to be served by the new sewer is, has been incorporated, not annexed, incorporated into the sanitary district. And that just means that the sanitary juris- district has jurisdiction over the area that was incorporated. The area we're talking about is fundamentally the property, the uh lots, properties bordering the north and south shore of Lake Shore Drive. So I believe all of you are familiar with Lake Shore Drive in Long Beach. The properties on both sides, on the west end, there's a small road. I don't remember the name of it, that extends about a half a block or so. And also, what some of those homes will also be attached to this. But there's three hundred and thirty parcels that were incorporated. There's approximately three hundred, some of those are little, you know, ten foot by ten foot uh parcels that are not buildable or not usable. There's approximately There's approximately three hundred and two properties that are either actually built on at this time or are big enough to be improved down the road. And those three hundred and two parcels, you know, plus or minus five, let's just say, are parcels that will be charged. A cap, the capital charge, uh, that's mentioned in the ordinance. The capital charge is required in order to be able to pay the bond payments. That will, excuse me, be, uh, used to pay the bonds. That will be the money for which will, uh, which will be used to construct the project. We've gone through the, uh, and some of you I believe know the SRF or state revolving fund process. And this runs with Indiana Finance Authority. That's the look, the source from which we're acquiring the loan, which will eventually be bonds. And of course, they, meaning the Indiana Finance Authority, won't give you a loan unless you demonstrate that you have the source of funding to pay back that loan. Make the principal and interest payments each year. And usually it's biannual, two payments a year. The, in fact, you have to show that you have enough revenue or will have enough revenue to cover what they call a hundred and twenty-five percent of the principal and interest. They want a little cushion to make sure that you're not going to be short. You also have to fund a reserve fund of one year's worth of payments. Uh, in addition to the regular principal and interest payments. All of that, in this particular case, uh, was investigated, uh, and uh, calculated by, uh, Fender and Associates. And I believe all of you have received a copy of that report. Uh, I'm not sure, but it lays out in stark detail and a lot of mathematics. The, uh, long and short of how much the rates are going to be uh, for the capital charges in order for there to be sufficient revenue as required by the SRF folks to fund the payment of the bonds over the year. These bond payments, even though the sanitary district is, you know, technically the borrower of the money, none of the sanitary district money will be used to pay the bond. The bonds, the sole source of revenue to pay the bonds are the property owners of the, of Long Beach that are within the project area that I just earlier described. So, um, the project at this point has been designed by Hassan Associates. Uh, they prepare for SRF projects. You have to prepare what is called a preliminary engineering report. That was done. It's like a thirty percent design roughly. Sent down to the SRF. They approved it, sent it back. Design was completed. And it, it, the, the, excuse me, the, uh, plans and specifications were bid, were let out for bid. A bid was received from, uh, Woodruff and Sons. And, uh, only one bid was received. It's a complicated project because A, you're, you're dealing with Lake Shore Drive. Uh, and it turns out that some of the residents or property owners had allowed or installed parts of their either retaining walls or actual parts of their septic system in the right of way. Uh, which may or may not cause a problem with the installation of the, of the sewer, depending on where it's actually located. But in any event, the, uh, project now is at the point where we have to finalize the funding. Because obviously we can't sign a contract with Woodruff for a ten million dollars to install this sewer unless we have a guaranteed source of revenue to pay them from. And it's not going to be the sanitary district or the city of Michigan City any, in any way. So that's why we are where we're at today. Uh, the step in this process are, some of you been, were around when we increased the rates back in twenty twelve. But the board has to make the initial evaluation and then eventually recommend to the city council to adopt a series of charges. And the board has to have and will have at its May twenty-fifth uh, meeting, a public hearing. That people can come and complain or praise or whatever comment on the suggested project and charges. The charges for, there's always capital charge when you install a new sewer. There's always, of course, ongoing user fees. In this case, because they are outside of the city limits, they are going to be charged the same user fees that other district customers that are outside city limits are charged, which was established by an ordinance of this council in the past at the request of the sanitary district, of course. So there's no change in the user fee that are going to be charged. These customers, there's only a new ca, a capital charge. Once the sanitary district has its public hearing on the twenty-fifth, it will vote to uh, either approve or not a resolution approving the rates and chart, the charges we're talking about. And at that point, that would be forwarded to the council, you know, executed improperly and forwarded to the council. So that the council then, I, I'm assuming is first meeting in June, would have the board's resolution requesting that the council approve the charges for the Long Beach customer, property owners to be able to fund the bonds needed to pay for the construct, the project. And once the council approves that, if you do, then the co, we can move ahead with securing, number one, signing the contract with Woodruff. And then two, finalizing and closing on the bond issue with the, uh, Indiana Finance Authority. So that the money would be available. The money is drawn down. It's not just paid out. You have to send the invoices from the contractor or bond council will also be paid. The, uh, financial consultant will be paid out of the bond proceeds. So, but it, it's not just, you know, you don't get a blank or a check for in this case thirteen million from SRF. You only get the money back when you show them the bill that you're going to pay with that money and they verify that it's associated with this project.
Um, any, I'm, um, I have, I have Councilman Chavez, Patrick, then Councilman Brian Dabney, and then Councilwoman Tracy Till.
That, uh, thanks for that, uh, attorney, my, I just had two questions. So what, uh, what brings this on now is the first question. And the second question is, what's the benefit of going forward with this project versus what they already have now that's, that's existing?
Well, right now they don't have a shore.
But they, they have some removal of.
They have septic systems.
Right. And is it failing or is it, is there a problem with it?
On the, well, I don't, can't speak for each individual, you know, the three hundred different septic systems. But the septic systems on the north side properties or some of the north side properties, a few, couple of years ago, when the lake was real high, actually got damaged from the waves. And the waves washed out. They are in a condition where their septic system no longer functions as a septic system. They can, they use the tank for the sewage to go into and then they have to suck that sewage out of a tank with a truck and haul it and they haul it probably to the sanitary district. There are several of those systems like that. I'm not sure the number. In addition, the La Porte County Health Department issued an order basically saying they were not going to approve any septic systems. Any, or any, uh, you know, changes, or I wouldn't say changes, but replacements of the septic system for this reason. And, you know, it's on the lake, just like Michigan City. In fact, it's immediately upstream of Michigan City. So whatever goes into the lake in Long Beach ends up in Michigan City and Washington Park and other places. But anyway, the, uh, because there's a, a kind of, there was a ban, like county health department, as I understand it, issued a ban, it, it adversely affected the ability of the homeowners to either get a loan or to sell their property. And, and I'm speaking folks on the north side. Uh, the town, you know, had decides and did decide what areas they wanted sewn. Uh, and I know, why I shouldn't say no, I believe from talking to the town council members over the years, that they kind of went back and forth at different times and eventually settled on this project. But that's why it's now. I mean, when you say now, that's not why it's today.
Yeah.
That's why it got into the design stage beginning like roughly two years ago.
Councilman Brian Dabney.
I just turned, I just wanted to comment. So you, that was impressive. Uh, that's why you saw me smiling while you were talking. Can you say all that again? That was, that, that was like a four week class on bonds. Um, I just wanted to say that that was very impressive. Thank you for, for explaining it.
Councilman Tracy Tillman.
Um, I just wanted to know out of curiosity. Yes, uh, my question is just with all the research and the studies and then they have the, um, public hearing coming up on May twenty-fifth. Would you happen to know out of approximately the three hundred and two parcels, it, how many residents were in support of this change? But I mean, considering with everything and how you elaborated on everything, it seems more so that they really don't have a choice.
Well, they have a choice. I mean.
Well, they have a choice, but the health department is not going to do the repairs. Um, it's something that's needed, but there are some residents who prefer to just leave things as is and continue to, if they have any issues, that they would take the necessary action to get that repaired.
Those are all issues and matters that the town had to resolve.
Okay.
And the town council, where the elected representatives of the residents voted to proceed with the project. The sanitary district had no control or input on that. It was up to the town to decide, when I say the town, the town council to vote, which they did, to proceed with the project. I'm, I'm assuming I didn't go to any meetings, but I would concur with your belief that there were people, there are people who don't want this project to occur and sure don't want to have to pay for it. Uh, but, you know, that's going to be kind of the situation in, you know, almost any situation where you're installing a large sewer project in an, in area. Uh, and again, you know, I can only assume that the town council members follow the wishes and desires of at least the majority of the town of residents.
All right, Councilman Don Privalinski, then Councilman Paul Privalinski.
Yeah, Mr. Myers, on that three hundred and thirty properties that are included in this project. Uh, a, and is the sanitary district in the town of Long Beach banking on that many people to be included in this, knowing to make it beneficial?
The three hundred and thirty parcels.
Right.
You gotta remember there's a distinction between parcels and building lots and lots. Anyway, some of those parcels, in order to incorporate an area, number one, the town had asked the sanitary district to do it. And number two, we have to ident, had to identify each parcel, no matter how small it is. I believe you're aware, I know you are aware, there are, there's in Michigan City and all over the state, uh, where there are some very small parcels that are left over from some type of real estate transaction that occurred, you know, historically. They're too small to build on. A lot of times they're next to a buildable lot and are being used by the owner of the buildable lot for their purposes. So there's actually, and the engineers, uh, Hassan Associates, uh, made an effort to count what they believe to be the either already built or buildable lots, which is three hundred and two. So the, in response to your question, those three hundred and two are, is the number that Fender and company used to decide how much, what the rates needed to be to pay the, make the bond payment. Based on three hundred and two monthly payments, or monthly payments from three hundred and two, uh, I've called property owners. They may, may or may not, most of them I presume will, but they don't have to be hooked up to the sewer system. And if they don't hook up, they would only be charged the capital charge. Not a user fee, only those properties that are hooked up to the sewer. Uh, now there'll, there'll be a stub put out from the sewer because the sewer is going to be right down the middle of Lake Shore Drive. So you don't want to be digging up the road, down the road to put in a lateral to, you know, a property that's being built on. But there'll be a stub put out to the right of way line of Lake Shore Drive or where there's an empty lot.
Council, Councilman Paul Privalinski.
Good evening, Mr. Myers. Pleasure to see you. Um, I, uh, have a few questions here about this, uh, proposal. First of all, um, how many, how many, uh, do you know offhand how many, uh, partials there are or partials with residents there are in, uh, the city along, the town of Long Beach?
No.
Do you know why the town did not form their own district and then hook up?
No.
Which that is an option they could do, correct?
They could have done it.
So now.
They could have formed their own, I think you're talking about, they would have had to form their own utility.
Right.
And then they would have to, you know, they can, they just, they don't have a wastewater treatment.
It's cheaper to do it this way. Okay, you don't have.
I mean, well, there, there's a lot of other reasons than just that because of the fact, it may, it may, it may or may not be. But they would have to set up a utility, which they would then have to fund in order to maintain and operate their system, which is an ongoing expense. Plus, they would have to continue to pay the sanitary district of user fee uh, for, you know, transporting and treating the sewage, so.
I'm just bringing that out so people know there's other options there. And I think there were arguments of, of very peppered arguments about doing that in the town of Long Beach. So now, one thing I want to know is, uh, you know, when you made a, a comment about the rates were passed, uh, back in, uh, you didn't put a date on that one, when you, for user fees outside the district. You did reference the, uh, user fees for the city of Michigan City that were increased in two thousand and twelve.
Right, but, but that was the same time that the
That was the same time.
Forty outside customers were also set, yes.
So could those outside charges be amended now? While we're doing this rate increase or doing this, uh, bond issue to make sure that, I, I assume that rates go up, charges go up and, and all that, but can this be amended at this time to i- increase the capital coming in?
No, the capital, the capital is being funded by capital charges. Not the user fee.
Okay.
User fees only fund the, the, what they call the OMNR, operations, maintenance, repair and replacement. Uh, so, and in order to raise any of the rates, You would have to have a firm such as Sender or, you know. Baker Tilly, somebody who has the credentials approved by the state. To do a rate study demonstrating that you needed to raise the rates. That's what happened in two thousand and twelve, for those of you who were around back then. But so you, I mean, you can do that at any time.
Right. Uh. I'm just pointing this out since we're, we're not having a workshop on this, all right? But also, um. We, we hit the base on uh. Uh, why, why the town didn't wanna form a, a district because it's a quicker and easier.
I, that was an assumption on my part. I don't know why the town didn't do it. You'd have to ask them.
From my previous history of watching their meetings on uh.
Oh, okay, you know more than I do.
All right, no, I don't. You got a degree. So.
Well, at least about the town's votes.
Okay, so. Touche. So when uh, that uh, mandate we're talking about. By the county and by the state. I, I really have a, cause I know there's a mandate by the state on septic systems that. You know, there, there uh, you cannot, if your partial isn't big enough. You cannot put a new septic in, you know? And I think we need to bring that out because these people that are on the lake shore. Um, I, I think that. I, I really have an issue by. Um. Looking at this whole uh. Procedure and, and what we're, and what people wanna do. But um, you know, I guess my problem is this. And I'm, I'm gonna keep uh. Reminding people about it, that there's been people in my ward been waiting for sewer repair and sewer work. Since uh, two thousand and five. And nothing's happened yet. So I think that the administration, for me. For me to be in the positive with this is to, they need to get on the hot seat and come up with something. To address different problems in the neighborhoods because, you know, we're. I know this has been a ongoing situation in Long Beach for a long time, but I don't think it's fair. To the people that I represent, that they're not getting service. And they're inside the city limits, helping support the sanitary district when something could happen. And um, al- also. By doing this, the way I, I'm reading this uh, document. So, or is the city of Michigan City carrying a, a? Financial impact on our bond issue, uh, our, our debt, carrying our debt so that we can uh?
Oh.
Where's that?
Talking about in reference to the constitutional debt limit. Is that what you're talking about? No, the answer is no, because they're revenue bonds.
And any, anything that we would apply for. As uh, to the, uh, what is that, not the land bank, but?
The Indiana Finance Authority and the S R F.
Finance Authority.
No, because the agreement in this particular case. With the Indiana Finance Authority will be that the sole source of revenue for the payment of these bonds. Is the finance, the capital charge. From the cus- like, the property owners of Long Beach who are within the project area. So. And he, it has nothing to do with the city's ability, or not the city, the sanitary district's finances. Or financial capability. Now, if, if the sanitary district itself wanted to do a project. You know, that the council and the mayor, or mayor, you know, wanted to go move. And we had to get, you could sell bonds either right out on the open market, or you can go through the S R F process. But you would have to have a report from a financial consultant. If you're doing bonds, it has to be an S E C recognized financial consultant. That shows that there is money available to pay them. And depending on the size of the project, you may need to raise the rates in order to generate that amount of money. To pay for whatever, you know, project you're talking about. But assuming you're talking about the Lafayette Barker.
I'm assuming I'm talking about that project.
Yeah, uh, you know, and as you know, it's like, I think nine, ten million dollars, it's a large project. Uh, but. The, you know, right now, their rates would not support a bond issue.
Well, there's.
To pay that. I, there are other sources of funds.
And, and I wanna make sure everybody can get their questions in, um, and, um, Councilman, um, Paul, can I? You still got?
No, I got a lot of questions.
I know, and maybe this, we should have a workshop still. Um, uh, so, I'm Councilman Don.
Yeah, one question, Mr. Myers. So what's the financial gain in Michigan City on this project?
And does it go, do we get any?
Either none at all.
Oh, I mean.
To the sanitary district, there's prob- I mean, in theory, it's even.
I mean, we're not, we're not doing this just for the sake of doing it. But. So what?
Well, we're doing it.
Any financial gain on annual basis from doing this?
Well, I, we're getting obviously three. I don't know, they say two hundred and fifty customers. I don't know how many are housed already and not. How many will connect and how many will not. But you'll get the rates for that, but on the other hand, you also get the responsibility to operate, maintain the sewer. And there's going to be three pump stations associated with this project. So fees under Indiana law. Fees are only supposed to be big enough to pay for act- actual expenses. Taxes are you, are, can be used to pay for, you know. And you can make tax, have taxes that are higher than what you need. To pay for things, but fees are supposed to be established that way. Now, is it a benefit to the sanitary district to have more customers and spread the cost? Cause the sanitary district's costs are fixed. You know, the fact that we have another two hundred and fifty customers isn't going to inc- other than the maintaining that sewer. Uh, and the pump stations is not going to cause, you know, any greater expenditure except a little electricity. Or operating the plant, for instance, maybe a little more for chemicals. But uh, overall, you know, there's economy of scale. So, you know, it definitely will not hurt. The sanitary district. I don't think anybody can calculate how much benefit is going to be dollar wise. Uh. And then, of course, the city of Michigan City benefits because you don't have any sewage, septicage. You know, coming out of the Long Beach, because. The Michigan City coastline of Michigan, Lake Michigan is a lot longer than Long Beach's. And we are literally downstream of Long Beach. So whatever goes in at Long Beach, ends up at Sheridan Beach and eventually Washington Park. You draw your drinking water out of Lake Michigan near that area. So, uh, to the extent that this project reduces, if not eliminates. You know, those septic problems, uh, contamination. You know, it's a benefit to the city.
All right, thank you. So I, I will call um. A workshop to, to discuss this further, but I do have a, a question. I'm not gonna switch seats. Is there any liability during construction to the city? When this, this is, when this is happening, does the city have any liability during this process? And you, when the sanitary di- district, when it's, is being constructed and all of that? And I know we're gonna wait on rates and things, and I don't know how else to say it. But is there a liability to the city during construction of this?
Oh, no, I mean, if you're talking about financial. The contract within, contractor would not be allowed to start until you know, pretty sure we got the money. Meaning the loan has been closed.
Okay.
Okay, uh, you know, the contractor has, as far as any kind of liability based on. Them being, they're an independent contractor, so we don't have vicarious liability. For their conduct, if they do something that causes somebody to be injured, number one. But number two, they are also required to have insurance in the millions. You know, liability insurance and other kinds. And then finally, there's also a, always a clause in those contracts for the contractor. Saying that they will indemnify the sanitary district in the city against any and all claims and lawsuits, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, that may arise out of their conduct in constructing the project.
Is there anybody from Long Beach here? That has seen, are you, okay? And before we, uh, cause we're still in public comment. So we're still in public comment, so we haven't even got to the council comments yet, so I wanna make sure if anybody. From the public has anything to say that we finish that out before we uh, continue with council comments, because we haven't gotten council comments. So um, any comments from the public, any additional comments from the public? Yes. I know we've been, we've been going a long time on. Yes, state your name and address.
Evening, uh, Tom Stevenson, twenty five fifteen Lake Shore Drive in Long Beach. Um, I know we've been here for a while, just had a few comments, um. A little bit of history about the. Oh, uh, sewer project for Long Beach, uh, previously state Indiana had requested a, a required setback off of. The uh, the north side homes on Lake Shore Drive, and that was, so all the septic systems were on the south side of. The homes, um, unfortunately, due to demand for larger homes and um. The uh. And, and due to developers that, through lobbyists that, um, they were convinced the state to. Uh, have lesser of a setback, and so now they put septic systems on the north side of the homes on Lake Shore Drive. Uh, and that was a very, very, very bad idea, um. This, um, because of the lake level is rising. They are basically ten to twelve homes now have been uh, impacted and have failed septic systems. So we have two hundred and ninety homes on both the north and south side of Lake Shore Drive. Ten to twelve homes have been impacted by that, um, so now they're on pump and haul. So basically, you know, once they, the waste goes into the septic system, then they, it doesn't go into a, a leach field that actually has, is held. And then they come and uh, retrieve it. Um, so that's a, that's about ten to twelve homes, um. The Long Beach started looking at investigating now sewer systems for, um, for the city or for the, the town, excuse me, because of this issue, um. And in two thousand and eighteen, um, we received an estimated cost. Of about three million dollars for, for the capital installation of the, of, of the sewer system, which would result about forty dollars. Per month per home. So that wasn't, you know, that's, that's reasonable. Unfortunately, with the current um, bid, which we received one bid, uh, by Woodruff and Sons. There was a twelve point five million dollars for the installation of the, the sewer system. And so basically, we're looking at per home about two hundred and fifty dollars per month for potentially thirty to thirty-five years. And that's just for the capital cost. We add the uh, the user costs, we're looking at three hundred dollars per home. Per month for about thirty years. Um, and. At this point, um, you know, I, I've lived, I've been living there for thirty-five years, um, all my kids went to Michigan City High School, um, I feel a part and power to the community. It's really frustrating. At this point, I have an operating se- septic system. I'm, I'm on the south side of Lake Shore Drive. I do not have a failed septic system, um, I have an operating septic system. All my other, my neighbors around the area, they all have operating septic systems, um. And uh, at this point, you know, we cannot afford, you know, three hundred dollars per month for another thirty years when we have an operating se- septic system. Um, and then, you know, the, the comment that waste is going into, um, the. Lake Michigan, um, these failed septic systems are on pump and haul, so the waste is not going into the lake, um. That does an incorrect statement, um, so I, you know, my, my thought is, you know, I, I, I. Respectfully request that Michigan City Common Council, um, reject the resolution for uh, the sewers, um, being. You know, uh, being, coming from Michigan City into, into a Long Beach, especially on, on Lake Shore Drive. If you wanna do something posit- positively, the entire town of Long Beach should be sewer. And not just, you know, picking out the homes along Lake Shore Drive, especially on the south side where, you know, we have, we have no issues. Um, and like I said, there's only ten to twelve homes that have been, um, that have, do have issues. And those are all pump entry, pump entry systems. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you. Any additional, um, public comment?
Hi, Ernie, how are you?
Welcome.
Three oh two Gladys Street, Michigan City. I have ifs and that, that about this, uh. It sounds like a good thing. It eliminates any of that running off into the lake. We already got enough camp contamination coming from Nipco down there. So I, I agree on that. And I don't know. If it is or not, but. I know I worked at Springfield School and they had to put in above ground septic tanks. They couldn't put in below ground. So they got, what, three, four, four of them above ground out there. And they still have problems with septic out there when I worked there for ten years, but. If they're getting this from pumping that right away and bringing it to sanitation, you're still gaining, you're, they're having to pay sanitation to bring that and dump it to you. But my question now is. Does sanitation have enough tanks to hold all of this? Is this not, is this gonna overflow into Trail Creek if they don't have enough tanks? And. When we have a heavy rain. I know that happened in the past and they had to cut, close the beach down because of the Okola. Levels so high at the beach. I was just curious about that, if, if they had enough. Capacity to, to maintain down there. I know. Where I live, I, I've been there fifty-one years. And uh, I was on septic when I bought the house. I asked the real estate agent. If it was city sewage or septic, and he told me it was city and. I started having problems with the septic and found out I had a septic tanks. So at that time, I had to hook in the city sewage. And it runs up the alley out back. In the alley, all the way up the middle of the alley, and the guys that were having to come out. Quite frequently, because that sewer line ends at the end of the alley into a. A parking lot for a factory. So therefore, it, it builds up at the end there and people can't get their sewer. To work and, and they have to come out. And blow that all out. They were just out recently and neighbor last house on the end. Had trouble with the septic, or not the septic, it's su- sanitation, and they had to come and blow that out again. And they told me at the time that that, that sewer line is too small. For what it has to take care of. So. We probably need work too. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ernie. Um, Attorney Harris, did you have, um, a question?
I did, it, it was answered, but I think for the benefit of everyone, I'll, I'll ask it just so you can all hear the, the question. Uh, we had this situation come up before with the annexation ordinance that we adopted. And I asked Attorney Meyer whether or not there was a waiting period following the public hearing that'll come up on, on this later this month. Um, and I'll let you answer the question.
Yeah, the, the public hearing is gonna be held by the board, and there is no requirement, it's only that the. Board has to approve the resolution. Once it approves the resolution and forwards it to the council, the council can act at its, you know, what it needs appropriate.
All right, perfect. Any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Comments from the council, Councilman Paul Privilinski?
Um. For, uh, I guess first of all. I was getting to uh, a gentleman's uh. Presentation. How many people have, I guess the big thing is that. Is there a state law that says that? You do not have to hook up to the sewer if it's ran within so many feet of your house? Is it like, you don't have to, we, guy, cause you made that, kinda alluded to that earlier. But it's different when it comes to water, right?
I, I don't know. I don't know. Not a water lawyer.
Alright, so anyway, I guess my, my point in the whole discussion here is this. How many people have committed to this project? Because as the gentleman stated, there's. X amount of homes that are, they're not having a problem on the north side of the road. And I think that's important to remember out of the three hundred and forty-two homes, if they haven't signed. A, some kind of M O U to participate with this project. It could, it have problems later on with the financing and, uh, I, I mean, there's a. If they have signed a commitment to hook up to that sewer line. Cause there, the gentleman said they're not having problems on the north side of the road. Jim.
Right. There is no need financially speaking for them to hook up. The requirement will be that whether they hook up or not, they have to pay. The capital charge, only the capital charge.
They gotta pay no matter what. For the twelve homes that need.
They have to pay for the sewer. Any, believe any Realtor, if you ever spoke to one about it, would tell you. That a property is worth, right, at least five percent more if you have a sewer instead of septic. I've been on a septic system in my house for twenty-some years. I'd gladly pay. The amount of money we're talking about to be on a sewer because of septic. Well, expense. But in any event. The district has no control. This is a question for the town. As to whether or not the project should have proceeded because it's a town, it's in the town, the town controls. So I'm assuming this gentleman's went to, they'd had a meeting last night, public hearing. About this, to have the public discuss whether they wanted it, liked it, didn't like it, whatever. But that's, you know, again, a decision of the town, just like a decision by this council is a decision from Michigan City. You guys have had decisions over the years where some people liked it, some people didn't. You voted what you thought was best for the city. And the ones that didn't like what you were doing, you know, had to put up with it anyway. So. I, you know, I. It's not really an issue for the sanitary district or the city. This, this issue for the town. And if they, you know, they can call off the project basically at any time, or, or other than. Well, you know, once there's a commitment from the bonds and the contract and it's done.
Can you clarify one thing? Um. I, I know you talked about the user fee and the use, the usage fee and you talked about. The capital fee and you gave an approximate where you said maybe approximately two hundred and fifty dollars. For usage in, in fifty bucks for the capital fee that.
No, just the opposite.
The opposite. So tell, say it again.
So if you, again, I don't know if you have the report or not, you should. But the, um. Local capital charge is calculated by sender to be two hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety cents. Now they'll round that off.
So that two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty approximately would be for everybody regardless of.
Regardless of the amount of usage. So then the, right, that's great. But that's only going to be used to pay the bond.
Right. And so that's thirty years.
Well, there's, there will be two bonds. One's going to be. The S R F won't loan thirty dollars, thirty-year loans on pump stations. So there'll be a broken out, the total.
Yeah, but all residents will, everybody that's a part of that project would be impacted by the increased monthly. Regardless if they hook up or not. So it's not the smaller amount that I, uh, it's the bigger amount.
Right, right. The fifty might be close to, the user fee will be based on how big their meter is. And how many cubic feet, hundred cubic feet, just like Michigan City resident.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify, cause I, I wrote it down one way and I, I didn't think it was right. So, um, thank you. That's what I needed. Any additional, um, questions from the council? No, um, this will be held over for second reading.
Of course, all of you have my contact information. So if any of you have any con, questions, feel free to contact me. I would appreciate when you set the. Meeting and then also it kind of the. So I know who to have come, the, not each specific question, but the areas. You would like to have addressed at the workshop.
Yes, uh, yeah, I think someone from the city of, of Long Beach for sure. Um, sender, if they're the one that created the, uh.
Rates.
The rates, um, so that we can have a form, something more, a little bit more formal. To, um, just talk about this specifically and if residents want to come in and voice their opinion, they can. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That'll be held over for second reading, um, at the next council meeting. Um, our, our next, uh. Ordinance on, our third ordinance on first reading by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local income tax formerly known as CEDIT. Fund for an on-call engineering service with Haas and Associates. And this is introduced by Ms. Shakers.
Is any comments from sponsors?
Um, yes, so this is for engineering that comes up in normal city business and, um. You know, this is, uh, the firm is Haas and Associates and. They have done a lot of good work for the city, a lot of good projects for the city. And I think they're an appropriate firm to, uh, hire for this, uh, for this amount. And this is from the, uh, lit tax.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Comments from the city council? It's Councilman Paul Privalinski.
Um, is there going to be a, a contract with this, uh, specifying their services? So. If we have a question that we can specifically call them and talk to who's ever handling our. Business, has there been a contract made for this?
Dwayne Perry, Mayor of Michigan City. Yeah, there will be contact numbers. This is what we do every year. We issue two to three service contracts. No scope of work is indicated. We have unit billing rates. So we have somebody, so to speak, in the bullpen. That if we need something done, we make a call and they have the necessary information. Uh, fund numbers or whatever to bill us. Uh, my first year in office, we did, uh. We did three of them. We did Global, Haas and, uh. I believe John Doyle, second year we eliminated Global. But we do this every year. We have more than one so that if one is too busy, that one of the other can, the, the other ones can, uh, fulfill our needs.
Thank you. Um, any, uh, Councilman Don Privilinski?
Uh, yeah, as far as the, uh, the company, I know, I, I know Haas do a great job. Uh, did we go out to any other engineering jo, uh, businesses and get rates from them? Did we get, do we need to get bids on this? Or is this, we can just go to anybody we want and get a contract?
We don't have that many engineering firms in town. Uh, basically what we, what my administration's done is follow the pattern of previous administrations. We keep. The business locally. So we have, uh, uh, we've lost one local business, S E H moved out of town. But we, we have only, uh. Uh, John Doyle and Associates, Haas. And, and Global. And we pulled in, uh, Primera. Uh, when we had our issue with our city engineer, because we needed somebody to get in the saddle immediately on the double track. And since, uh. Mister, uh. Was, I, I forget his name, Brad.
Minnick.
Minnick, Mister, Mister Minnick was very versed in the double track aspects of the double track. Then we went into a contract with Primera.
Okay, so my question is, did we approach any other engineering companies?
No, we did not.
We have John Doyle and we have Global. Why don't we approach them and see what their hourly rates are and see if they want to get on this contract?
We'll certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any, uh, additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Gene Simmons.
Now, this is just a retainer, isn't it?
Yes, I think so.
Madam President, if I could address.
Yes.
Maybe I can clarify a little bit. Um, and, and I think the mayor alluded to this already. Many communities handle engineering services this way. And basically what they'll do is they'll approve a master services agreement. And that master services agreement contains most of the provisions of their actual contract. But as the need arises, they'll issue a task order approving them to work on a specific project. So there may be master services agreements in place for several engineering companies. And based upon their expertise, then the city administration will call upon them to do this particular work. Um, at the rates that are included in the particular task order or in the master services agreement. But normally it's in. The specific task order. So this, it's not a retainer. It is an appropriation of the council to fund. Future task orders that don't yet exist.
For not to exceed them all.
Or not to exceed them all, correct.
Any additional questions from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul.
I, I guess what I'm really, uh, um, trying to get to is that. Um, underneath this contract. Um. On service for, uh, is there going to be any, is there going to be an issue with? Any council members calling for any information or, uh. Questions on things going on in the city?
That I can foresee as I stand here.
Oh, okay.
Any additional questions? Yes, Councilman Don Privilinski?
Yeah, for, well, for example, uh, if Haas and Associates gets this. And I know that, uh, Jeff Wright, you know, the past. City engineer works here now and he was working on the, uh. Sidewalk project last year and I, I gave him a ton. Of sidewalks that need, that need to be, uh, repaired. So. You know, i- i- if Haas is the company, then are the council members, can I call Mr. Jeff? Right up and say, Jeff, you got the list or the list are somewhere here? Or do I got to go out and recount the sidewalks? And get the addresses and, you know, give you the information. Otherwise, we're, we're going to lose a whole year, year and a half of work that could be being done in awards and. You know, already it's the middle of May, but by the time this gets approved, three more reading or two more readings in another month. You know, and then by the time you get Ethan Riley back on the scene. And you tell him where all these addresses are at, we're going to be middle of July, maybe even getting sidewalks done. So. I just want to make sure and like Councilman Paul Privalinski was saying. That we can call Mr. Haas or call Mr. Wright up and say, hey, we need to get this done. You got my list of addresses from last year or do I need to go out and get the addresses again? Get this work done. Cause those people asking me already, what's up with the sidewalks that you were talking about getting done? And, you know, I'm just saying right now it's up in the air. I don't know what's going on.
Well, you don't have to regenerate all that information. We have all that information. It's usable. And when, but. With this contract, Haas holds all the liability, all the responsibility legally. So if you have a question, just as a protocol, I would not call Mr. Wright. I would call Tim Haas and he'll put you in connection with Mr. Wright or he'll have Mr. Wright call you. I don't have a restriction on talking to Mr. Wright, but as a protocol, you should probably go to the head of the company. But all that information has been saved and it's readily accessible.
Councilman Dabney, did you?
Yeah, real quick, um. I think the elephant in the room was just identified with some of us. And the fact that, uh, the engineer that we had, our city engineer. Uh, worked for us and we had some issues, big issues, uh, three, four hundred thousand dollars worth of issues. Um, and a possible. Another three, four hundred thousand dollars worth of issues in terms of community, uh, grant paving. Things of that sort. Um, and, and now to know that that gentleman is at this. This firm, I know it's the firm, but that is kind of the elephant in the room with, with some people. Um, you know, and, and obviously including myself, I brought it up. Um, regarding services, uh, there. Um, I'm sure I'll get into this in, in some more. Eloquent lingo down the line, but I, I just wanted to identify this is kind of an elephant in the room. Um. That is, I know some of the other council members will discuss as well.
Well, Councilman, in, in response to what you just said, um, the council can do whatever it wishes. Haas and Associates has more than just Jeff Wright. They have a staff of engineers. So if the, if the count, if the council is interested in doing business with Haas and Associates. But they don't want Jeff Wright involved, you can stipulate that. This is a contract with Haas and Associates, not Jeff Wright.
Thank you. And, um, I'll, I'll go ahead and make my comment because that's what I shared with Councilwoman, uh, Dahlia Zieg is that. Um, I will support this. I, I've known Tim Haas for a long time and I know his work, but I will not. Be in support of this if he's going to touch any of our information or, um. Have anything to do with C C M G or any type of engineering for the city. Uh, he's cost us too much. And he does have a great staff and he's had that staff long before Mr. Wright got there. So I, I feel that is a stipulation in my opinion. That, um, like I said, the last council meeting, I don't, I want him banned from doing any work on our stuff. So. Mr. Haas, um, he can come here and, and if he, he doesn't have to, but I've known Tim and I know the work that they do. And I know they do good work. I just don't want Mr. Wright touching our stuff. And that'd be my comment.
Well, thank you, Madam President. You're certainly entitled to that position and your point of view, your position is duly noted.
Any additional comments from the council on this matter? Councilman Paul?
I, I'd like to make a motion for, uh, to have second reading tonight on this.
Yeah, this is going to have a formal public hearing at the next.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, um, thank you. This will be held over for second reading, um, you know, for second reading, yes. Um, Ms. Nyla, um, first ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only amending municipal code section two dash. Four, six, one, B three, commonly known as the Sustainability Commission. And the city's annual salary ordinance for their services. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Mack, Ms. Ziegus. And Ms. Dutch.
Any comments from the sponsors? With that being said, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council?
And Madam President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Alright.
That was the last meeting, so I didn't have the opportunity.
Awesome. Got that. Any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just back when we were doing the budget hearings, um. This came up in regards to the boards and commissions and their, uh, compensation. And not all boards and commissions, um, receive an annual salary. Um, for being, for serving on those boards. So I originally had proposed that. If we're going to do this, not that it's a question whether. That particular board or commission is requesting to be paid to sit on that board or commissions. But if we're going. But if we're going to pay, then it should be across the board. Each board and commission should then be paid. We have, as as it's clearly stated numerously, we have the funds to do it. But since the consensus was then, we voted down, for example, the boards and commissions where some secretaries were getting paid and some were not. Some weighing in on, well, the type of responsibilities or duties is being done more so than another board or commissions. I just think that if we do look at this, this is something that should be brought up during the budget hearings coming up really soon.
Thank you. Any comments from any other council members? With that being said, will this be held over for third reading? Ms. Mile, the second ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Board of Public Works and Safety of the General Fund to Provide Members of the Michigan City Sustainability Commission with a monthly payment for their service on the commission. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Mack, and Ms. Jacobs.
Yeah, I'm I'm meant to get added to this one, too, Ms. Mile.
The last one or this one?
This one.
I've already got you on there.
All right. Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Oh, this is, this does have a formal, you know what? Thank you. I didn't see this on the next page. So we do need to do a formal public hearing. So now we will open this up. Today is, it was advertised, make sure I got this, advertising a herald dispatch on May fifth, twenty twenty two, that a formal public hearing will be held today, May seventeenth. Are there any comments from the public on this formal public hearing or this ordinance? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? All right. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, ma'am, Chairman, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to this room also.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Tillman.
Madam President, thank you. As I stated before, in regards to the unappropriated balance for the thirty nine hundred dollars to pay members of the Sustainability Commissions fifty dollars per month of thirteen, for thirteen members, as I stated before. One, this is something that can be brought forth during, for the twenty twenty three budget hearings. And if we do, taking into consideration of doing this, then it should be across the board for all boards and commissions to receive compensation for sitting on those boards or all or all or nothing.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. Any additional comments from the the council? That being said, we'll move this to third reading.
Excuse me, I'm on point of order. Madam Chair, I've had.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. I'm blind tonight. I got a different pair of glasses on. I'm sorry.
I just want to say this is that I I I agree with Councilwoman Tillman's position on this. It's either all or nothing, and you're selectively picking and choosing. So if we're going to do it, we should be doing it for everyone. And I don't know if some people have more fame of favoritism because of the Sustainability Committee and their positions on the environment and diff- different things like that. But I will say that there's a lot of people that donate their time to the city on different boards. Maybe we need to look at the whole fee structure on what they're being paid so more people serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Privilinski. Councilman Brian Dabney.
Just want to read a list of some of the other boards and commissions that are being compensated. And this is one of the whereas it's in the in the ordinance, whereas numerous members of the other city commissions, such as the Police Civil Service Commission, Board of Works and Safety, Board of Cemetery Trustees, Licensing Board, Plan Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, Fire Merit Commission, Human Rights Commission, Social Status for African American Males Commission, the Women's Commission, which we added, I believe, last time, but it didn't start until the new year. Yep, twenty eighteen, Women's Commission, Tree Board, Fire Pension Board, Police Pension Board, and Park Board are compensated on a monthly basis as provided by the city's annual salary ordinance. And the reason I wanted to read this is because the comment of favoritism, when there's, I mean, you couldn't account them all, others that are being compensated as well. So just wanted to point that out, that this is not one being chosen out of thin air over others. There are many, many, many others. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman. All right. Any additional comments from the council? This will be held over for third reading. Ms. Nyla, the neck, the fourth ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending ordinance four, five, nine, eight, commonly known as the twenty twenty two salary ordinance to establish a monthly compensation for members of the Michigan City Sustainability Commission. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Mack, and Ms. Jacobs.
This is the third one, I'm sorry. Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? All right. Yep. You get that, Ms. Nyla?
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Paul Privilinski.
You are on the approving the appropriation for the cybersecurity, correct?
No, there's a, there's one more. I know I had to check. It was the third. Any, any comments for this one?
No.
This will be held over for third reading. Ms. Nyla, the fourth ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund from the upgrades to security system at the City Hall Central Services, Central Maintenance to pay for upgrades to the city's cybersecurity system and to purchase necessary equipment for the city's emergency management volunteers through the Michigan City Police Department. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Jacobs.
Any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the sponsors? Comments from, this is actually a formal public hearing. And this was advertised in a herald dispatch on May fifth, twenty twenty two. Are there any comments for, from the public on this formal public hearing? Any comments from the public? Comments from the public? All right. Comments from the council?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Any comments from the council? Councilman Paul Privilinski?
Well, you know, on the cybersecurity, I know that it's important. And I was wondering, have we, are we allocating the money before any proposals have come in? Have there been any proposals that come, that have come in?
Thank you.
Good evening. Andrew Metanic, Information Technology. We have not obtained any proposals, and the reason is, is because we can get a very good base price for our equipment that we would need based off the Indiana quantity purchasing agreement that the state has already went through the bidding process on a lot of the different equipment that we're going to need. And because of our in-house expertise from our cybersecurity staff that we have in place, we are comfortable being able to create this entire project and actually go ahead and execute this entirely in-house without the need for any outside consultants or any type of vendors helping to create a proposal for us.
So are you, well, the reason I'm asking that is the amount being requested is is it too much or is it at too little?
It's adequate. We went through, I went through along with my staff. We went through the entire list of what we're requesting here and put together realistic numbers based off of those QPA agreements. The only thing that was stated a couple of workshops that we, we do anticipate a delay on implementation of this due to the fact of the global chip shortage that we could be looking at anywhere from three to six months, maybe a little bit longer on some of the equipment in order to be able to obtain the devices. And if that occurs, there may be a slight fluctuation in prices just because of the models that were bid it for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two year, such as on the QPA list, is renewed on June twenty second. And so if the new agreement from the twenty third onward until next year on the, you know, for twenty three, if there is a model change or a price change, there could be a slight difference in the pricing that we could incur just because maybe that part number is no longer available because a newer model came out and we could not obtain the earlier model because of the fact that it was not available due to the supply chain issues that were, you know, seeing a huge impact in the IT world on.
So what, so what you're telling me is that you're not going to implement it probably until next year?
Uh, we're hoping implemented within the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days upon approval. But I wanted to let the council know that there's a chance that we could have significant delays, just not to set expectations, you know, too high where we're going to try to agree that, yes, it'll be done by July or August. Because until we actually place that order and can try to lock in, you know, and get some of these parts, we're not going to know for sure when we're going to get, you know, when it's going to arrive. We've had some good experiences with other things that we have purchased where we were told, you know, three months, six months, and we received it within two months. We've had other instances where we've ordered pieces of equipment, and we ordered them in, I think it was May of twenty one, and we received them, the last pieces in February of twenty two. And so, I mean, that's kind of the worst case scenario. So that's where I wanted to kind of set the expectations where we don't know for sure. But based off of the data that I have off the pricing that I have from the state of Indiana, these are realistic prices on what we anticipate these, these items that they're going to cost.
Okay, so anticipation is that probably you're going to need more money. But let me ask you this, Mr. Metanic. With the implementation of this program, can you guarantee me that we will be secure and not have a shutdown like the county?
Absolutely not. I cannot guarantee you. I don't think any IT person in the world would go up and say, I can guarantee you, we're not going to get hacked. You know, there is no way that you can guarantee security. I mean, you look at different government agencies all the time being hacked. You looked at Fortune five hundred companies getting hacked regularly that have a lot more financial resources than we do that get attacked. I mean, in some of the workshops that I did, I mentioned, you know, with the increase that in cybersecurity attacks that, you know, city government is a prime target. And the reason that city governments and county governments are a prime target is because usually they are underfunded. Usually they have equipment that is obsolete. And they also are targeted because of the fact that many of these operators that are coming in and trying to target these different locations of these different entities know that we have or should have, in a lot of cases, a insurance policy to cover such types of attacks. And so we become a very appealing target. And so with those things being said, you know, we are, we are definitely a target. And, you know, it's one of the things that I mentioned to a lot of different people in workshops is that, you know, we at the city in the security part, we got to be right a hundred percent of the time. They only have to be right once. And so there, and this is a very, very dynamic situation where threats are changing, you know, by the minute. And so there is no way that I could guarantee a hundred percent security. And I cannot guarantee that we will not be hacked or, you know, our files will be encrypted. We can just mitigate those risks by doing things that I'm not going to express publicly in an open meeting about how we go ahead and try to mitigate those risks.
I understand that, but let let me also ask you this. How much more money would it cost for you to feel more confident that we have enough walls that they can't get in?
I, based off of this proposal right here, this is where I feel confident with, is what I proposed.
Okay, so in one sense, you're saying you feel confident, but in the other sentence, you're saying you're not confident.
I'm saying that I won't guarantee it, but I do feel confident that based on the city, size of the city and the size of our network that we are proposing the correct size equipment. And but there is still, there is no guarantees. I mean, we could go and, you know, buy the most elaborate system and, you know, out there, which we are getting something that's very elaborate. But it's no guarantee that we're going to be a hundred percent secure. And that's why I would never come up here and guarantee to anyone that we have nothing to worry about.
Okay, so you won't even get, give me a vote of confidence at fifty percent?
I don't want to push my luck with trying to say that we're going to, you know, that we're, I can just say that we are making it as secure as we possibly can.
Ten percent?
I don't know. I'll go with fifty percent confident that we will not, but you know, there is no way to guarantee.
That's right. All right. Councilman Bryant Dabney.
Yeah, and and I'm not going to address anything technical that's your field. But the quality purchase agreement, the quality purchase agreements that you're talking about, I deal with these on a daily basis. And in terms of purchasing truck parts and things of this sort, and all of these QPA agreements that are set by the state of Indiana. In the background, there's usually something in there that says if it costs that company that we have a QPA agreement with, if the prices raise for them over a certain level, they can cancel these QPAs. And then they come back with a new one where the prices could be sky high. And that is happening like wildfire where I work. And we're getting two or three cancellations of QPA agreements all the time. So while we have this in place, while we have this, these quotes and dollars on the table, we better act because, like I said, these prices with chips and everything like that are driving prices up. And like I said, if they go up by a certain percentage of a cost to the company that you have these QPA agreements with, they can cancel them. And then reissue a new one with a lot higher price. So I'm seeing it from the finance side that we need to go while the getting's good.
Yes, I'm Councilman Shonkis Patrick.
I just got one quick comment as, I guess, to hit on the point of guaranteeing or whatever. This is basically a upgraded lock on your front door. It's going to slow somebody down if they want to get in there, but somebody really wants to get in there, they're going to kick it in and go in anyway. So we're just trying to deter them and slow them down as best we can at the time right now, pretty much.
That is a great analogy. I mean, one of the things is, you know, a lot of times we're, we're not trying to protect against some guy sitting in his basement trying to hack us. We're trying to protect our network from countries, I mean, from Russia, from North Korea, from China. You know, we see attacks every day from those different locations. So for us to be able to say we can design a system that's better than what, you know, a major country can produce, you know, I can actually not get around is, I think it's kind of naive. I mean, they they have a lot of resources and a lot more resources than what any company or any municipality would ever have.
Thank you.
Any additional comments from the council? Councilman Paul Privilinski?
Well, with that being said, Mr. Metanic, is there any firms out there that specialize in municipal? Well, with that being said, Mr. Matanik, um, is there any firms out there that specialize in municipal security? That you know of that we could, uh, work with?
And in the presentation actually I, that I did, there is actually one company that we would like to bring in to, uh, assist us with enhancing some of our, uh, security. And, uh, they will be very helpful in that regard. And that's not with some of our physical security. Like I said, I'm not really, I don't want to get into any type of brands or names or anything right now. Because it just makes easier for people that do want to attack us to, oh yeah, they have this, this and this. So perfect, now I know how to, what vulnerability they have. So, but anyway, uh, there is a company that we used about ten years ago. That is a very highly respected international company that we would like to bring in and lean on their expertise. In order for us to take the next step in enhancing our security, uh, throughout the city.
Is, that's not included in your, is that included in your quote?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel better.
Yes, Councilwoman and Dalia Ziegus.
Yes, uh, I would like to move that we suspend the rules and do third reading today as well.
Thank you. Do we have a support for that?
Support.
Thank you. So we, um, have a motion on the table to, from Da- uh, Councilwoman Dalia Ziegus and support by everybody, the, a couple of people. Damn me, um, um, Ms. Nyle on the roll call to suspend, to move to third reading.
Uh, Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Pres- Pres- Prespolinski.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
And Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Nay.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyle. Can you read, um, our final ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only. Approving additional appropriation in the budget of the A R P Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for upgrades through security system at City Hall, Central Services, Central Maintenance to pay the upgrades to the city's cybersecurity system and purchase necessary equipment for the city's emergency management volunteers for the Michigan City Police Department. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney, Ms. Jagus, and Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Any comments from sponsors? Any comments from the sponsors?
Madam Chair.
Comments from the sponsors?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, com- any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? That being said, comments from the council, Councilman Paul Prabulinski.
Um, as requested at our last meeting, I got a update. And I wanted to thank, uh, Captain Lonesky for his, uh, transparency. He sent me, uh, or he gave me the, uh, quote for the, uh, truck that they want to purchase. And I believe that's in the capital outlay portion of this of eighty thousand. And, um, he also gave me the information on the, uh, gator that they want to purchase, which is seventeen thousand. And a another, which I'm trying, um, some other equipment, which I can't really determine of twelve thousand. So I, I think that truck's gonna be, uh, uh, a good tool. I also noticed that they're, uh, getting a V plow on it. Which is a very good, uh, instrument to use in, uh, snowstorms on clearing streets. And, uh, diff- different, uh, areas that you have to augment and move the, uh, plow to direct the snow. But I think that truck is really a good piece of equipment. And, um, they, they're outfitting it, uh, very, very well. That is heavy duty. So I think that, I think when it comes to that, I think that it's, uh, uh, well, will be a, a good asset to the, uh, the, uh, not EMS, uh, Emergency Management, uh, Department. So I, I can, uh, I can, uh, support that. And I, I hope that, you know, a lot of, and I understand that. Mr. Matanik doesn't want to put that out on the equipment, so this doesn't pertain to you. Is that, this is what I like to see when people want to come here and get money, all right? What you're gonna use it for, what, what, how you're outfitting it. A lot of people may not know anything, but I, I did like, I'll give you a specific. That they're getting a very good engine in this, they're getting a, a two-point, uh, some people may not like it, but I know one thing, it'll push snow, cause it's a six point two V eight. And that it's getting a, uh, three point three, uh, locker rear end on it. And, uh, if you know anything about automobiles or, or trucks, is that, that's good equipment. That's, that's what I'll, I'll address that. So I will vote in the positive for this. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Hi.
And Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Uh, we don't have any new business. Um, we do have unfinished business that will stay on the agenda. Um, until we, uh, move forward to resolve the, uh, social status for African American males. I'll open it up for comments by the public. Comments from the public, state your name and your address.
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. A little bit ago, we were talking about improvement of information technology. Think a place we need to start is with the Michigan City, Indiana Wikipedia page. If you go on there, it needs, uh, updated and edited really badly, I think. Like to have somebody maybe take a look at that that has a little bit of background in that, like maybe, uh, Mr. Drew White from, uh, Alco here, he's, uh, I think we all know that he's a very highly skilled and accomplished journalist. Or maybe Councilwoman Dalia Ziegus, you know, she's a school teacher, so she, she's graded a few papers in her days. So it's something that we really need to look at and get taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public?
My name is Brian Gross. I live at eight thirty West Sixth Street, um. And I've been, I've spoken here before about problems I've been having getting building permits for a small industrial building I own. I talked at a public works meeting back in November, the mayor happened to be there. And after the meeting, I talked with the mayor. He said he would set up a meeting with the appropriate officials, maybe we can figure this out. About a month later, I called the mayor's office and he said he forwarded it to the planning commission. So I've left messages with the planning commission. I've stopped in there. He's never available. To date, he has never returned a call, left me a message or anything. As a resident, as a citizen, as a freeholder, as a taxpayer, I really expect more from this administration, and it's just not happening. I've got the same thing with the, uh, building commissioner. She rejected one of my building permits I submitted back in November. And, um, I kind of know the reason why. But I've left her messages and sent her emails and all that, and I've gotten no response back. And the problem is, she says I need a life safety report. I've Googled it, I've gone to the state's website, which the state actually requires it for industrial buildings or commercial properties. But there's no information on it except for the, uh, N F P A's, uh, one oh one. And so she, she has yet to explain to me what she needs or where I can find the information. You know, a- as the building commissioner, I find that really lacking that she's not willing to help people get the information they need. Along those lines, I think anytime somebody rejects a building permit or, uh, a, a, an inspection is failed. Building inspectors should include the chapter and section of the code that they are violating. You know, I've had things rejected and they don't tell me why. You know, you've got to have a section in the code. I- if the code doesn't outlaw it, then I should be able to do it. So you should be, if you're enforcing the code, you should know what the code says. And you should be able to relay that to the people, and that just isn't happening. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and, um, Councilman, uh, Sean is the liaison for the planning commission, so.
So if you have a, if, if you have a moment after the meeting, I'll, I'll get with you really quick.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Additional comments from the public? All right, uh, open up to council comments. Yes, Councilman Gene Simmons.
First of all, excuse me. First of all, I wholeheartedly agree with this gentleman. I've noticed personally that through my constituents throughout, we do a terrible job in getting back with citizens with complaints, uh, very simple complaints. Last week, I had three emails back and forth. Well, you said someone was going to get in touch with me and I'm still waiting. There's a lot of frustration out there and we need to address it. We really need to address that frustrations of citizens. How difficult is it to give a person a call back? That's it just drives cra- uh, I, I have an issue with, I have a real issue with it. Because every week I'm getting a call, you said so and so is going to get back. Well, I've called down here personally and they assured me that they were going to take care of it. Doesn't happen. On a lighter note, I'm gonna move on. I'd like to congratulate Shaded Creek, uh, with their grand opening last Saturday. Uh, what a, what a beautiful winery. I would encourage everyone of age, of course, to get out and to support, uh, the, the winery just, and if nothing else, just to see it. It is a showpiece and, uh, we should be very proud of, uh, Shaded Creek. Uh, not just because it's in my ward, but but Michigan City has, uh, has a nice winery. I have friends from, uh, California, uh, who's a wine, uh, expert, and I'm always, uh, kind of hesitant to take them out to the winery. Now I can take them out to Shaded Creek and feel kind of proud of. That's, that's my only comment tonight, but again, city, you need to answer your complaints. When, when the citizen call with a complaint, you need to get back in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Um, yes, Councilwoman, uh, Dalia Ziegus.
Uh, yes, I would like to second that from Gene about the, uh, Shady Creek Winery. What a beautiful place, really. Everyone should at least go take a look at it. It's phenomenal, gorgeous. Uh, on another note, uh, this last weekend, if you are a birder, you probably know that the Indiana Birding Festival, Indiana Dunes Birding Festival occurred. Uh, and there were six hundred and fifty people from thirty one states that came to visit the area. So I would love to kind of brainstorm and kind of troubleshoot how we can try to get more people over to Michigan City during that whole weekend, cause it starts Wednesday, basically, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And, uh, during that, it was also announced that, uh, Michigan City is now a bird town, Indiana. So Indiana Audubon has given us the title of Bird City, Indiana. There's probably, I don't know how many, there's a bunch of cities in Indiana, but we are qualified right now. And it was to the, uh, efforts of Marynell Murphy and the Potawatomi Park, not Potawatomi Park, Potawatomi Audubon Group that meets here in La Porte County. So they were the impetus behind it, and both Marynell Murphy and Laura Henderson, who were involved, are both on the tree board as well. So I think that's a nice thing to celebrate. And if you want to see more about that, you can go to my website, daliagegas.com. Thanks.
Right, any additional comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Michael Matt.
We'll just follow up on a, uh, the, uh, letter and the kids that were here earlier talking about the, uh, need for a field house. Uh, on, it's coming Wednesday on the twenty fifth, at the Hope Center at five thirty, I'll be having a, uh, community building series. I'm gonna start doing that kind of regularly. But the main premise of that will be to, to get this discussion going. Um, there, there's hundreds of sig- signatures out there. And I, I'm confident we're ultimately going to do something in this area, uh, at some point. But I, I really want to make sure that the community, um, holds our feet to the fire for something more than just a basketball court or a gym. Um, we really need to, uh, have a, a huge investment in our youth. Um, when you, when you, and, and in our community, cause there's, this, it's more than just athletics. It's a community center. It's, uh, uh, things, uh, where adults, where, where we, where we can staff it. So there's quality adults there having great interaction with children, not just a building that allows, you know, kids to run around unsupervised. So, um, it, it is time for that discussion to start. And, uh, I think we should start at the highest vision that we can possibly attain for the city of Michigan City. And that's what I'm gonna be pushing for. So, thank you.
Additional comments, yes, Council, um, and Don Priv- Privalinski?
Uh, and to coincide with, uh, Councilman Simmons and Councilwoman Dalia Zaggus. And I know that, um, you were there, Councilwoman Deitch and Councilwoman Tillman. Shady Creek is a, uh, it's a showcase is what it is. I was, I was really amazed. I mean, I don't go to a lot of wineries. My lo- my wife loves to drink wine, so I know that she'll probably be going there. And I gave her a couple few, uh, tokens to go out there. So she'll be, she'll probably be joining the wine club, I'm sure, or her girlfriends. But the place is beautiful and, uh, like Councilman Simmons said, just go out there and visit it. If you don't drink wine, just go out there and get something to eat. It's, it's really, really beautiful. And I really want to thank the Schwartz family for, uh, pardon? Oh, okay, maybe she wants to be, maybe she's at Shady Creek. Anyway, uh, I want to thank the Schwartz family for their big investment in Michigan City and into that. And then, uh, uh, the C S X tracks, which have been a big issue here in Michigan City for, I don't know, six, seven months. Ohio Sweet's been an issue for probably three years, trying to get that crossing fixed. Well, good news, uh, the CSX repairmen were down at Ohio Street today. They're in that intersection or that crossing apart. And the Tilden Ave, they were down there tearing Tilden Ave apart. And both of those crossings, uh, in talking to the, uh, supervisors on site, both of those crossings should be done by Friday, but, you know, barring any delays, if not Monday, Tuesday for sure. So those crossings should be opened. And I just want to give a shout out to a, uh, a gentleman, he's not from Michigan City, but he works for US Senator Braun's office. And back in January, you know, I was sitting around and because I tried to contact the congressman, we didn't get anywhere there. We're trying to get these crossings done. Uh, so then I thought about talk, calling the, uh, US Senator and got ahold of, uh, his representative from Northwest Indiana, and his name is, uh, Tony Ferraro. So I called Tony up and, uh, set up a meeting between him, myself and the mayor. It just so happened I couldn't make it because I was sick, but Tony still came to town. Him and the, uh, mayor went out, looked at the crossings. And, uh, Tony said he would get on top of this because apparently the US Senate has a lot of power over the railroads in, in the United States, and, uh, he said that he could help. Uh, once some very, uh, strategic and valuable paperwork uh, got from the mayor's office to Tony, Tony was able to make a couple of phone calls and talk to the right people. And within a, uh, week, week and a half, he had things set up and he called me last week, then I passed that information on to, uh, Councilman Paul Purblinsky and Councilwoman Tillman, because that's their ward, the Tilden Ave, that, uh, they would be coming into town. And lo and behold, they showed up on Monday. So, you know, we're going to get that done and, uh, but I just want to thank Tony Ferraro and US Senator Braun, whether you're Democrat or Republican, it doesn't matter. He still stepped up and they got done with what we're paying our tax money to do. They got it done for us. So just want to thank him for that. Thank you.
Any additional council comments? Councilman Paul Purblinsky?
Um, I want to give, uh, a lot of kudos to, uh, Councilman at Large, Don Pris- Donald Prisbalinsky for his, uh, tenacity on these, uh, crossings. And I hope everybody takes to heart what he said is that he called the senator's office. He's not gonna, I'm giving them the kudos because he instrumented the call, not the Board of Works or anything else. He did it. That's the problem in this whole administration. So now here, um, I gotta, I have a, a real problem living in the second ward and they're closing down all the streets. And now with the coordination of, they have, and I know that the work needs to be done, but Ohio Street is, is shut down now at the crossing. Franklin Street is shut down. Uh, all, the only streets that are open are Washington uh, and Wabash. And they have all the detour signs going down Washington Street. So you can just imagine all the traffic on those streets. But my problem is this. Now would be the opportune time to do a traffic study, to implement a traffic study, and that hasn't been done. And I talked to the plan director about this a year ago. Where's the traffic study on closing down these streets? And I was, I was told, uh, the, the rare, uh, the railroad's got it. What the, what is going on here? The city should have paid for it and done it. Now, I sure hope the grass get cut, gets cut at the cemetery this year. So I'm saying that tonight, so hopefully it's cut for Memorial Day. Because that's coming up. We need to remember all those people that served and sacrificed it all for us. Mr. Gross? Mr. Gross has been here consistently for the last, how many years? And this is absurd, what's going on with the planning department and their code. Because I was told, I, I submitted a drawing for a simple stair improvement at my house. And they, I was told they needed a better drawing. And I agree with Mr. Gross that, my goodness, they need to tell you what you're doing wrong. That's like when you take a test, well, you see the, the, the check marks on everything that you missed, all right? And if you've got a problem with it, you go ask the teacher, where, where can I find that in the chapter? Because I missed it. Now, I think that with all due respect, somebody's failing in this administration when it comes to the code. And I think we need to have a workshop on it, get through the BS and straighten it out. And that might mean some more work for Mr. Harris. I'm sure he won't mind. But now, I want to remind people I could not believe what happened to me a week ago. I got a additional check with my check on a COLA payment. It's, uh, and it has to be significant, and I know the contractual language. It has to be in extreme levels to get that payment. So whatever you're thinking about or whatever else, this is a bunch of baloney sausage what's going on. It's killing us. It is straggling the economy down. And, uh, I haven't had a COLA payment since the nineteen seventies when, because I remember it. Because when inflation was running twenty four percent in the, they said that our president was a communist because he instituted price, price and wage controls on the economy to cool the economy down. And I will tell you, that, that might be coming, so, um, I just, I, I just, I, I had to share that with you. And I'm not proud of it either because I think the middle class are being squeezed, squeezed and squeezed. And, and on top of that, we got people running around looking for formula. I, I mean, that, this is just, it almost reminds me of the city of Michigan City's administration. That's what it reminds me of. That's what it reminds me of. And too bad the mayor left because I would have told him that. And I don't have a problem telling him that to his face. So now, what I will say about, um, the, uh, boards and commissions and the elephants is I think that we need to reserve our comments because we're getting to the point where, uh, I think we're defaming people. And, uh, we need, we need to be very cautious about that. And, uh, because that individual's in public life now. So, but what I will say is that I want to thank all the veterans of every service branch. And I want to thank and give my condolences to the widows and the family members that have lost members of their family in armed services in defense of our country. And that I believe that you have to honor our veterans. And I mean, the police, firemen, those are veterans too, EMS people. So the, yes, the coroner, the, yes. And, and they, they all need special thanks and kudos. But come Memorial Day, just if you see somebody or you know they're a veteran, thank them. There's a lot, Indiana, Indiana is one of the most, um, uh, out of the population per capita has the most veterans and, um, active service, I believe, what I read. So anyway, I, I really wanted, wanted to say something tonight and, uh, I'm going to remind everyone that we had a workshop. Um, what was that, six weeks ago? We had a workshop on the, uh, tax. And there was a comment made in the audience. Some members of the city council heard it. I didn't hear it. But that individual knows who said it. So when he's, when he is at a meeting, I will address him about that comment. Because there's some things in life that you just can't let slide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And any more comments from the council? Yes.
Uh, just two more comments. Uh, and with Memorial Day coming around, and I'm sure that's what Councilman Paul was referring to. Uh, one thing I try to do on a daily basis is fly my flag. One thing I'd really like to see a lot more people in Michigan City do, I had to go out and purchase flags, American flags, and fly them out in front of their houses and be proud of it. Uh, I don't think there's enough people that fly flags. And I can't tell people what to do, but I just love looking at the American flag, what it stands for. And especially on Memorial Day, for what people have sacrificed for us to sit here and enjoy what we enjoy. Uh, a livelihood and a lot, and the most freedoms in the world. So I would just like to encourage people to fly their flag. And lastly, uh, Councilman Purblinsky, I appreciate your, uh, your, uh, uh, thanking me and, you know, kudos and, but I, I didn't bring that up for that point. I just brought it up for the fact that I wanted to see, to get this done. And just to help the city out and help the citizens out to get this thing expeditiously get done and, uh, and go and go in that direction. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Well, I, I have a few. So, um, I just want to, um, just say to Councilman, um, Don Privilinski, because, um, it would have been done sooner if things had been followed that you shared. So I'm just going to say that you did everything to get that thing done with the CSX tracks. But, um, also as far as, um, comments about individuals just stating statements of fact don't defame people. So a statement of fact, and when I, when I say something, it's because someone did something that affected the city and our money. I just want to say that. Um, as far as Shady Creek, um, I go to, I've been to quite a few wineries and this is a destination location. It, it's hands down better than any winery in Michigan. I'll say that. Um, but probably in the Midwest. Um, and children are, can come because it's a retail space. They do tours. They have a stage, they have all those things. And, and this family has really invested a lot of time and money um, into that project. And I, I congratulate them as well. Um, it was, it's beautifully done. Um, also, um, the Blucker supermarket on the east side um, is having a, their soft grand opening on, uh, May twenty eighth um, at ten o'clock in the morning. That's the old K and M. We know that, you know, the east side has been a food desert and, um, we really need to support, uh, you know, Dottie Black is the, the owner and, um, she's been working really hard for la- through COVID to, to get to this point. And, um, we got to be a little patient. They're, you know, working, working up to, they're fully, um, stocked and, and hiring people, but they're having the grand opening on the twenty eighth at ten AM. They're doing a ribbon cutting. They're going to have, uh, basketball legend and from DePaul, uh, Terry Cummings will be there as well. But, um, we know it's a food desert, but we have to find opportunities to support it as well. So, um, I would entertain a motion and, and again, have, you know, Memorial Day. Um, again, you know, our family's a military family. Um, the sacrifice is great for our country. So with that being said, I entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Always in order.
All right. Thank you. Everybody have a good evening.